Our Father, who art in heaven, is the body we congregate in these council chambers. We pray for thy divine guidance that we may do all things well according to thy holy will. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzal.
Here.
Mr. Clark.
Here.
Mr. Thompson.
Here.
Ms. Stevenson.
Present.
Ms. Hannerhand.
Here.
Mr. Seinkert.
Here.
Here.
We have all members present. We have one request to amend the agenda, and that is to add the administrative report from Mayor Williams regarding his annual report regarding the state of the city. Ms. Stevenson?
I move that we amend the agenda as you have stated.
Seconded by Mr. Bonzal, is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzal.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson.
Yes.
Ms. Hannerhand.
Yes.
Mr. Seinkert.
Yes, sir.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. We have two sets of minutes, December 11th, 2018, and January 8th, 2019. Each of these were emailed to you, or a couple of typos and corrections that were -- new copies were made and given to you this evening. Anything, if there was nothing of substance, nothing of substance, it were typos. Mr. Clark?
Do to approve both sets of minutes as a friend.
Seconded by Mr. Braden, is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzal.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Hannerhand.
Yes.
Ms. Seinkert.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. We have one request to address council, but it's not on agenda items, so we'll deal with it later on in the agenda. There are no reports of standing committees nor second reading of ordinances, so we'll move on to introductory reading of ordinances. The first is an ordinance authorizing the service safety director to enter into an agreement between the City of Norwood and the PACE Telecommunications Center Board, PTCB, a nonprofit corporation in the City of Norwood. Mr. Bonzal.
Thank you, Madam President. I would move that we have the first reading of the ordinance.
Seconded by Mr. Thompson, is there any discussion? Mr. Bonzal.
Thank you so much, Madam President. So the ordinance set in front of us is basically approving the agreement that's kind of separate here, but it's essentially redoing the agreement between the City of Norwood and the PACE Telecommunications Center Board, who runs Norwood Community Television. There's some outdated language in there that didn't account for all cable TV revenues, even though the intention was for the cable TV revenues to go to Norwood Community Television. I think we all agree that they do a fantastic job for the community and well worth what is spent to keep them operating. Inside the agreement, there were a few things that are added, and one of the things that was added, something personally that I was hoping that did get added, was the, essentially, some language in here saying that if they have time, like if there's extra time, that they'll do kind of some video consulting services for us. So maybe we want to teach people how to pay their water bill online or other type of things, and they would have been happy to probably record it no matter what, but we have it recorded in here, so if we don't, if the person running it in the future is not as great as Tyler, then the city still has some, you know, ability to get some of those services. So it's, I'm excited about it and happy that we're going to be moving forward.
Thank you, Mr. Bonzal. Any other discussion? Ms. Stevenson?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. I had a chance to talk with the law director earlier. Section 3 of the ordinance actually calls out that this is declared to be an emergency measure necessary for the immediate preservation of public peace, health, safety, et cetera. It wasn't noted as such on the agenda, and so I just wanted to make sure we had clarity on the timing in which we need this to pass and whether or not we need to amend motions to actually consider this as an emergency.
Mr. Moore?
Thank you, Madam President. As a practical matter, we don't need to, there's no rush to pass it. Council last year, year before, I think, last year, decided to, we're just going to take the money we're getting from Cincinnati Bell and any future video providers, that we would just forward that on to the, to PACE and Norwood Community Television, at least for the time being, and the purpose of this agreement essentially is to give them some assurances that other providers and Cincinnati Bell revenues in the future would continue to go there as opposed to the city using them for something else. So there's no really real emergency for it. The only thing is that once council decides to do it with the emergency clause, it goes into effect immediately as opposed to waiting a certain amount of time. And the other effect of having an emergency clause is that if the residents, some residents are unhappy about it, if there's an emergency clause, they cannot gather signatures in order to put an initiative on the ballot to overturn it.
Not subject to referendum. Yes, Ms. Stevenson?
Thank you. So just to clarify, this is the first time I've seen an ordinance that has an emergency clause or section that isn't asking us to consider it in an emergency fashion, and so I just want to make sure.
I don't think that's true. I think, like a lot of our appropriations ordinances, still have them that you've done two and three readings on.
Thank you. That's right. I've only done that once, because we've had one fiscal year. So just to be clear, the emergency feature is about the timing in which it's enacted once passed.
Correct. So once it's passed and the mayor signs it, then it goes into effect immediately as opposed to a 30-day waiting period?
Yeah.
And also, as Mr. Moore said, it's not subject to referendum, so it's a protection for Norwood Community Television?
Thank you.
You're welcome. Mr. Bonzal?
Thank you, Madam President. So since the ordinance does and does not have and declares an emergency in the title, is there an issue with it not being both? Because normally we have and declares an emergency if that's what we were wanting to do in the caption.
Mr. Moore?
Thank you, Madam President. It would probably be best practice to amend the caption of the ordinance to read and declaring an emergency.
Even if we don't pass it this evening, just to put it in the title?
Correct.
Okay. Mr. Bonzal?
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you for answering that, Mr. Moore. I actually, I think it's probably, I would be okay with taking Section 3 out of the ordinance to just strike the whole emergency language, because there's really no need at all to have it. As soon as we pass it, I mean, it's going to be, Norwood Community Television, I think they're waiting on us to pass this to start buying some, they've got to buy some equipment to make the community television work again, because right now people can't watch it on the Cable Access Channel. So I don't think that this, having an emergency ordinance and having it acted immediately is going to change exactly when they buy it. I think us just passing the ordinance is probably going to allow them to get what they need to do.
I'm not sure that that's the case, but I don't know for sure. I think they were waiting to make sure that they were going to get all of, I might be wrong.
Well.
We'll leave it up to them. It is certainly up to you as a council to do what you all want to do. You look perplexed. Yes, Ms. Stevenson?
Thank you, Madam President. I thought I'm recalling, you are a current board member?
As in the previous agreement, there are five people who are on the board. One is appointed by the school board, since they use the school facilities. One is appointed by the city, since we're the ones who collect the money, and you, I've been on that per, for a while, since I've been president of council. And then there are three at large people, and so I am currently your representative on that board. Yes, Ms. Stevenson?
So as a board member, are you saying that you thought the staff was waiting for us to approve this before making those equipment purchases?
I'm pretty sure, although I don't know if the last check from, we haven't had a meeting this year, so I'm not sure if they got the check from last year that was being held. If they've received that, I don't know if anybody's back there that maybe can answer this that's back taping this, but they were waiting for the check, a check before purchasing that equipment, because that one piece of equipment that will allow it to go out on the community television's channel is about 70, it's over $7,000. And so they operate on a real shoestring budget. If they've gotten that money from last year, then I think they're probably okay. We've been, you know, we've been working at this for a year, and they don't, they still aren't operating under an old contract, so I think it was more about money than it was about the contract. I think there's good faith between all three organizations, between the school and the city and PACE Telecommunications Board. So I think either way you go would probably be fine, unless Tyler sends a message through Steve and tells us otherwise. I haven't seen Steve open the door back there, so we'll see. So the motion on the floor right now is to have the first reading. Mr. Bonzal?
Thank you, Madam President. I would make a motion that we amend the ordinance to remove Section 3.
Is there a second? There is no second, so the motion will die as a result of that. Ms. Stevenson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think I understand the law director said the emergency measure that's included is not about the timing, but it's about the recourse that could happen after we pass it. There cannot be a referendum to dissolve the agreement. Is that right?
If you want the emergency, Section 3 to stay in, which obviously you do, no one seconded the motion, then we probably need to amend the title of the, we need to amend the title of the ordinance to add and declaring an emergency. What then happens is, if you leave Section 3 in, if you pass the ordinance and then if the mayor signs it, then it goes into effect immediately, and it is not subject to public referendum. People cannot go out and gather signatures and say, I want to put it on the ballot, that Norwood, PACE Telecommunications is not going to be the people who provide access for Norwood Community Television. So it's not, that cannot be done by keeping the emergency clause in. Ms. Stevenson?
Thank you, Madam President. Unless there are thoughts the other council members have that they have not yet voiced, I think it's a good idea, since we knew this was coming and kind of how it was coming, to amend the caption and go ahead and consider it as an emergency.
Mr. Seinkert?
Madam President, if that was a motion, I would second the motion by adding in the caption at the end of it and declaring an emergency.
I was going to ask that as a motion that you made, or do you want to clarify?
I will clarify. I was inviting other comments, and based on Mr. Seinkert's comment, I will make a motion that we amend the caption as Mr. Seinkert suggested.
To add the words "and declaring an emergency." Mr. Seinkert, you will accept that second? You will make the second?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Is there any other, any discussion? Mr. Braden?
Thank you, Madam President. I'm glad to see this. The people that I've spoken with, they're disappointed they can't see this on their community television. So this is something that I think we need to pass, and if that's the case, that they're waiting to buy this, then I agree with the motion and the second. I think it's a great idea.
Thank you, Mr. Braden. Any other discussion? So the motion on the floor is to amend the agenda, to amend the, to amend the title of the ordinance to add the words "and declaring an emergency." Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzal?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Ms. Hannerhand?
Yes.
Mr. Seinkert?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Braden?
Yes, sir.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. Now that we have a title to our ordinance, what would you like to do with it? Mr. Braden?
I'd like to make a motion that we pass the.
Suspend the rules and have all three?
Suspend the rules and have all three readings.
As amended?
Yes, thank you.
So wasn't there already a motion?
Is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Seinkert. I'm sorry, you have a question?
Just point of clarification.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Bonzal was going to question, there was a motion.
There was a motion that you wanted to read.
On the floor for the first reading.
And when we amended it, that takes precedent over, but we still have, you're right, we still have the first reading on the floor. I'm sorry. Do you want to keep that motion?
Well, I mean, is there a desire from other people that we have all three readings
His motion was still on the floor to have the first reading. So is the, is it the wish of council to pass this this evening and suspend, or is it to just have the first reading? I think that's what you're asking. At this point, I couldn't tell you. Mr. Braden?
I think the overall feeling I'm getting is that we want to pass this tonight.
So it's your, it's still your motion. Ms. Stevenson?
Thank you, Madam President. I am willing to second the motion for the first reading of an emergency of the.
Mr. Thompson had already, that motion is still on the floor, so Mr. Bonzal moved, and Mr. Thompson seconded that we have the first reading.
I think, I thought you were asking, are we in agreement for that motion to move forward?
It's on the floor, so we'll have to deal with that one, and then depending on how the vote goes, we, if it doesn't pass, we can move from there.
Okay.
So it'll take four votes to have the first reading. Mr. Bonzal?
Thank you, Madam President. I mean, I'll withdraw my motion and let you all figure out what you all would like to do tonight. It doesn't matter to me, but I don't know who seconded it, but I'll withdraw if they're willing to.
So you're withdrawing your motion, Mr. Thompson? Are you withdraw, I can't wait to see these minutes. Mr. Thompson, you'll withdraw your second?
Sure.
Okay. So now we have a, an ordinance that is amended with, now you're ready to take action. What is your pleasure? Mr. Braden, you want to make your motion now? Or are you confused too?
My motion stands. My motion stands is to have all three readings.
Okay. Seconded by Mrs. Hannerhand, is there any discussion? So we're clear. Motion on the floor is to suspend the rules and have all three readings of the ordinance as amended. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzal?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Ms. Hannerhand?
Yes.
Mr. Seinkert?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. Please have all three readings.
Ordinance authorizing the service safety director to enter into an agreement between the City of Norwood and the PACE Telecommunications Center Board, PTCB, a nonprofit corporation in the City of Norwood, and declaring an emergency as amended. Ordinance authorizing the service safety director to enter into an agreement between the City of Norwood and the PACE Telecommunications Center Board, PTCB, a nonprofit corporation in the City of Norwood, and declaring an emergency as amended. Ordinance authorizing the service safety director to enter into an agreement between the City of Norwood and the PACE Telecommunications Center Board, PTCB, a nonprofit corporation in the City of Norwood, and declaring an emergency as amended.
Mr. Clark?
I'd like to move that the ordinance be passed.
Seconded by Mr. Braden, is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzal?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Ms. Hannerhand?
Yes.
Mr. Seinkert?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. Next is an ordinance authorizing the clerk treasurer to certify unpaid bills for the cost of grass cutting to the Hamilton County Auditor for filing as a lien on the tax duplicate of the owners of said parcels and to be collected as other taxes and declaring an emergency. Mr. Thompson?
Move that we have the first reading of the ordinance.
Seconded by Mr. Braden, is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzal?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Ms. Hannerhand?
Yes.
Mr. Seinkert?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. Please have the first reading.
Ordinance authorizing the clerk treasurer to certify unpaid bills for the cost of grass cutting and the Hamilton County Auditor for filing as a lien on the tax duplicate of the owners of said parcels and to be collected as other taxes and declaring an emergency.
We'll move on to introductory reading of resolutions, and the first is a resolution expressing support of the Norwood Adopt a Park program. Mr. Thompson?
Move that we have the first reading of the resolution.
Seconded by Mrs. Hannerhand, is there any discussion? Mr. Thompson?
Yep. Happy to bring this forward to everybody today. It comes out of the Parks, Recreation, Streets and Infrastructure Committee. It says, a program that's been worked on for quite a while now by Greg Oros and Donna, and we brought it into, President Lake, sorry, I use first names, we brought it into our committee to look at it and review it and make sure it was where we wanted it, and now we're bringing it forward for resolution to adopt it. It's a, it's a program where businesses, organizations or individuals can come through the city's planning department and volunteer time, services, money to help out with our city's parks.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Is there any other discussion? Might note that in the plan, it also requires that reports be made to the safety service director, so they're aware of what, so the administration is aware of what's going on in parks, even if people, you know, do their own little neighborhood park things, so it's a way of keeping track of the good things that people are doing in the city. Is there any other discussion? The motion on the floor is to have the first reading. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzal?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Ms. Hannerhand?
Yes.
Mr. Seinkert?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. Please have the first reading.
Resolution expressing support of the Norwood Adopt a Park program.
Well, we'll move on to administration reports. Mr. Mayor?
We are required to give a state of the city address on why we feel the city's condition is at the present time. To bring you up to date, Mr. Gears, Donna Lake and myself went to the chamber, and at the beginning, I told them, we're going to tell you exactly the way it is, and some of it's going to be positive and some of it's not. I would like to be positive. I think we've got a good future in front of us, but we've got to get through some tough times first. And what I usually do is I usually prepare something, and then I will go so far, and then I will verbally address some of the questions that are in there, because I can't put in everything I've got to say or be that thick. I will start out by saying the city is entering pivotal financial time. Let me begin by reminding you that we are in the middle of reducing our operating costs to continue the process of regaining our financial security. There has been a lot of discussions with the bargaining units. Our position is not changed. We are following the financial recovery plan. As you know, council passed the recovery plan, it was submitted to council, council passed it, and it went on to the Financial Planning Commission, which they passed. So we are going to follow that plan in our negotiations. Mr. Gears is in constant contact with our financial supervisor, plus we report to the Financial Commission as the administration, and Ms. Lake reports as the president of the council. The plan addresses, for example, the number of police and fire, not to mention the cost of medical. On more than one occasion, we have been forced to make changes to medical insurance. It just drew to the point where we would have lost a lot of money had the decision not been made to go ahead and change it. That didn't go over well, and I fully understand that, but there was no choice. On more than one occasion, we have been forced to make changes to medical insurance. There are just a few difficult issues that must be faced. The bargaining units have followed agreements, stating their contractual difference, which you virtually would expect. Once again, the bargaining units, their mission is to take care of their, the people that they represent. It's what they believe. Our job is to follow that plan and do what we can to bring this city out of it. That's our, that's our job, that's our mission. At this point is where it becomes challenging. Let me explain. Under the Ohio Revised Code, 4117, the law spells out the course to receive, resolve contractual issue. If arbitration happens, the arbitrator can determine that the bargaining units should be given what they want. If the city does not give the funds, the arbitraer ruling stands. The other part of the equation is Ohio Revised Code, Section 118. This section deals with fiscal emergencies. Under this section, the city working with the state auditor devises a plan and charts the path for city to get on financial ground. The plan is prepared and submitted to council. That's our position. We have followed that plan, and we continue to follow that plan. That plan will be updated at a later time. If there's a problem, I will not violate that plan. You want to amend it, you can amend it, but I will not violate that plan. And it's going to be a conflict down the road, because 4117 deals with contractual issue, 118 devolved, you know, with the fiscal emergency. I've talked to Keith. Where does it turn out? Keith said, heck, I don't know. And nobody does, there's really not a president for it. But I can tell you this, we sit, Donna and I sit, Joe's in the meetings with Financial Planning Commission, and they want to know what's going on, what are we doing? It's just, it's just a difficult process, and it leads to some difficult times and some difficult feelings. But with that said, the way I personally look at it, as long as I've been around here, I believe that we have to look down the road to survive. That's just my opinion. And I know financial chairman, Keith, Mr. Seinkert, everybody in the past, has said for years, we can't keep this up. We just can't. And finally, it went down, and so we're working our way out of it. Mr. Gears is in constant contact with the Financial Planning Commission, with the supervisor. We don't do anything. We don't sign any contracts, we don't buy anything, we don't do any decisions unless we clear it through them. If he wants to make a request to change something or come to council, he clears it to that financial supervisor. They're like we are, they do not like surprises. We finished the black in 2018 by 1.6 million. A large majority of that was a one-time income of $400,000 from a company who paid out bonuses. It's a one-time shot. It's not going to happen every year. There was three policemen short all year, probably more than that, half the year. Last year, the cops were running five and six short, there's still three short. Plus, the safer grant was a one-time thing coming in. Here's what we need to look at. Out of that 1.6 million for everybody who wants it, everybody's got visions of doing Five Streets, or we want to do this, or bargaining units want that, and everything like that, here's what we're facing. We want to bring the number of police to 45. That's what the plan calls for. Their contract calls for more, I understand, but we want to follow that plan and bring them to 45 as quick as we can. We need three cruisers in the worst way. If we wait longer, we'll need five. They're junk, and they're dangerous to drive, and so we need to make every effort that we can. We have a backhoe that's shot, we borrowed a backhoe. This is a 20-some-million-dollar budget. We have street crews out there working on sand and salt and everything else. We have a borrowed backhoe. It'll be $138,000 to repair that. The city hall roof, we're estimating it'd be $100,000. Now, a lot of people don't think of that as a big deal. Go back in that corner, and if you don't fall through the floor, you know, you're going to have a problem. If you go in the auditorium, it's, look at the, look at the plaster coming down. That's all from water damage. And the more we go, the worse it's going to get. You have to maintain this building. Besides that, it's filthy. We can't, we don't have a janitor. We have people that come in and hit it like a few places. We don't have a janitor. The building is dirty, and when people come into it, it's waste, it's a shame. The lateral lights, we hear a lot about the lateral lights. Well, House Come, Gears is not doing something about that lateral. Give him $75,000 to $100,000, and he'll fix it. There's no $75,000 or $100,000, but everybody keeps complaining about it. There's a master switch at Waterworks Park for the ball dining. It's $20,000. So those kids can play baseball at night. We have three people at Public Works, we need three more people at Public Works. Look what they did over the snow. It was bitter cold, the bottom dropped out. Look how much good they did with nobody and no equipment, but they plowed, they did everything they could to keep it going, and we looked every bit as good as anybody else around here with 10 times the equipment, with sodium chloride, we're going to mix it with the salt. We don't have anything to mix with our salt. So we're working, those people are down there getting a lot, you're getting a lot out of those people for what you're paying. And the other thing is, the state auditors have said to us, we need a new accounting system. The auditor's office accounting system is antiquated. It's old. It's shot. Now, if you're supposed to account for things, finance committee's supposed to make decisions, department heads are supposed to make decisions, you can't get access to the information because that accounting system is shot. It's as simple as that. That's going to be $200,000. So after all this, well, we got $1.6 million. That's, $1.6 million is gone. That's $1.6 million is gone plus. So when you hear, and that's been the history of this city for as long as I can remember, as soon as there's an access, well, we don't want to put that money away. We don't want to buy equipment. We don't want to buy. Give it to us. They spend it. Council members come, I got this patch product that I want. Or another council member says, I want this. Or a bargaining unit says, I want this. Or a department head says, I wants this. I'll give you something else to consider. Down the road, I'll bet you it's been, what, 25 years at least since a piece of fire equipment was purchased. Paramedic units, fire equipment. Fire equipment over there, probably the youngest pumper is probably 25 years old. We're going to need a pumper when he stays. And to top it all off, we'll probably need an aerial truck. That's probably $700,000. So these are things that are going to have to be purchased. These are things that we're going to have to be purchased so the city can provide up-to-date and safe service for their city. And it's not going to be easy. But the first thing we have to do is cut our operating costs. You will hear next year, it's election year, dangerous time, oh, bad news. You don't know what's coming next. You're going to hear that we'll have an earnings tax. We'll pass a tax levy. Really? And I said, in my time, whether I run again or not, in my time, I'll veto an ordinance. And let me tell you why. If we're going to go to the public and we're going to say, we want you to vote yourself more taxes because we can't do it, they have to vote themselves to raise their taxes. I think the city's got an obligation to go up and say, we are saving this, we are saving this, and we are saving, we are being good stewardship of your money. We have cut our operating costs. So therefore, we would like you to vote a tax levy. The other thing is, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, I'm sure somebody will, if we do a street levy, it's five years. Now, at the end of that five years, it's got to be renewed. So you vote the tax levy, and it stays on for 10 years. Joe will tell you, with his experience, it'll probably take millions, millions of dollars to do these streets and probably take 20 years. So what happens if you get 10 years down the road and everybody says, my street's done, I'm going to vote it down? So in order for this to occur, you have to justify what you're spending. And you have to go to the people and say, good stewardship of your money. We're not making the same mistakes all over again, and we want you to have faith in us to go and support this action. I say joking sometime. Hell, I don't trust the city, and I'm the damn mayor. And I mean that by saying there's so many people that want to shove their agenda through. And we don't know about them, but that's the way it's always been, and that's not necessarily unhealthy. But everybody's got their own little agendas that they want to follow through. I think it's time we start looking at and dealing with the tough problems. If we're able to reduce our costs, good. We don't know, but I feel that we're obligated to make the attempt. As difficult as this, and it can be difficult personally and otherwise, it can be very, very difficult and hard. And if you've got a thin skin and you don't have a sense of what you're supposed to do, it'll bother you. But we have to do it. There's no choice. One more thing. Over the years, we've heard, and I believe that we've done a pretty good job. You figure out in eight years, we've brought in, we've done $350 million worth of development and 3,000 jobs, and we're still in the hole. A famous chairman of finance committee said one time, we cannot keep this up. It'll collapse. And he was right. Another finance chairman said the same thing, and he also was right. We have an auditor that said the same thing, and he was right. Yet here we are. I've been through it before. I plan on living here. I'm not going anywhere. And yes, I want the best damn service I can get. But then, on the other hand, we just can't go on like this. And one of these days, we'll be out of it. We always make it. And one of these days, we'll all be over, and I'll drive by the city halls and old men, and there'll be somebody up here saying, well, I can do that for you, or I can do that for you. And I'm going to say, I wish to hell I could have done it for you. Because we would like to say yes to everybody. We would like to say, sure, you got a problem. We'll take care of it for you. We'll buy this. We'll buy that. We can't. All we get to do is tell people, no, I'm sorry. As far as city hall, take a walk around this building and tell me what you think. One last thing. We've also had a lot of discussions about economic development. Well, I can do this. I can do that. I can bring in this company. I can, you know. You know? Here's what I've been trying to accomplish for years. And I've been thinking about it, thinking about it, and I put it into a motion with somebody who's very knowledgeable in this. Have you ever heard of 3CDC downtown? I want to form, on a much smaller scale, a 3CDC in Norwood. We set it into motion. Covington has one. Cincinnati has 3CDC. I want the same thing for the city. I want to try to make it a public-private partnership. I think we've taken it as far as we can go. I think what we need is some financing. We've got some muddy pledge, a lot of money, but then we need to set up a formal structure. And I think one of the discussions was to take it from Lafayette and Montgomery South. Now, this is just not big businesses. This is businesses. This is large and small. So people that are pros at looking, taking applications and looking at finance can assist small businesses to get started. I was close, and things kind of fell out, so Donna Leroy's got the ball. She didn't want the ball, but she's got it, and she's going to work to advance it on. So I'd like to be positive. I still am positive. If I didn't think we was going to make it, I'd walk away now. But I think we're going to make it, and I'm determined to do everything I can to make it. It's difficult, but we don't have any choice. Back in the days when it was a fiscal emergency, we came out of it, and the city said, okay, you people got, you did with nothing. You didn't have anything. We had cruisers burning up, wheels falling off. We had problems all over. They didn't lay anybody off. They didn't replace anybody, but they didn't lay anybody off. And that's when we negotiated with an ordinance, with a handshake. We would meet with them, and we'd shake hands, and that was it. And they'd pass an ordinance. And they could have changed that ordinance anytime they wanted, but they honored their commitment. So there was a moderate honor. That's a word you don't hear around here too often. That's something you don't see around here too often. But they honored those agreements. And I think what happened was, remembering that people were hired for the city for nothing, and they did with other things, and they wanted to try to make them whole again. And so it started to bring them back whole, but then as time went on, it started to go down. And then 4117 come along in 1985, and that was it. Because once that occurred, there was no handshakes. There was no nothing. Somebody from New York can tell you what you're going to pay. And what we're looking at now is to follow the plan and see where it takes us. And we'll continue to do that. If you don't have any questions now, I don't know what you're listening to. I would think you'd have some questions. I would.
Questions? Mr. Thompson.
Thank you, Madam President. Thanks for delivering your address. I was, a question I constantly get asked about is quality, and I didn't know if you might have an update about what's happening there.
I got asked that four times today. I was told that for a second time, the owners that had it before are out. Now, there's another owners, two guys, one from Detroit, one from Baltimore, called me, and they're looking at, they're supposed to take it, and they got the financing for it, to do the hotel. That's all I know. It's better than what it was, but I am not happy with it. And so we stay in contact with it. And per our plan that we've always done, we don't make announcements, they do. So we're waiting, and we call them, but so far, nothing. And once again, we were told, the first thing we ask anybody is your financing in order, do you have financing? And if they say, yeah, we tried to apply somewhere, and then we do our background checks, we start checking on them to see what they've got. So no, I'm disappointed in that, but I'll tell you, we got a couple of things in the pipeline that may be sort of really neat coming down the road, so that we're working on it. Of course, I was told, hey, we got the financing, so we'll see. But I'd like to have better news for you, but I don't.
Mr. Braden.
Thank you, Madam President. It's good to see you today, Mr. Mayor. Glad you're here. My question is about, you mentioned the roof of City Hall. Do you remember the last time that was worked on, or the last time that was new? Just curious.
It's been passed, I don't know how many times, but, you know, it's not, see what Joe did before. For example, the downspouts were originally started with, came down through the walls and went down to the sewers.
Sure.
And that cast iron pipe, after 70 years, it didn't hold up. You know, you can't depend on anything, but it let go, and so there's been water building up behind those walls. And we had roofing company come in and line the gutters with copper. Then we took the copper down the outside to get rid of the water. Well, the water still builds up up there, and I think it's been passed, I don't know how many times, but replaced totally. I couldn't tell you.
I ask that because I can remember, and I was trying to find a year, but I was here on that the last time that was worked on. I was actually working in the mayor's office and redoing the mayor's office and around the auditorium. And Mr. Stevens, I guess, was here working a little bit. I don't know how long ago that was. It's the reason why I ask him.
17 years.
I do remember the roof being worked on, but I don't remember if it was new.
It was patched.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Braden. Any other questions?
Can I add one more thing? I'll give you an example in this negotiation. It's how it works. We, the fire department, we had a disagreement with them. Now, understand now, they are representing their people. So this is just, these are just facts, the way they work out. And the decision was to take it to a conciliator. The conciliator determined that ORC 118 did not permit to increase the cost for the operation of the fire department. Okay? A few days later, on December 31st, an arbitrator for the contract with the police department ruled that the city, 118 or not, must pay, cut the levy for 17 and 18, even though we're in a fiscal referendum. So you have two different people going two different ways. If that ruling hires them, it'll be up to you. We'll be explaining that to you. It'll probably cost the city over $200,000. So once again, I'm not following the bargaining units. I'm just telling you that once, sometimes when this happens, yes, the city has no control. And the only cover that we have is to follow that plan. Now, Keith, you can correct me if I'm wrong. Under that plan, if the city appropriates, doesn't appropriate enough money or appropriates too much money, the state can come in and say, you're not following the plan. You overappropriated, am I right? You overappropriated, so therefore, we're going to put you on last year's budget and cut you by 15%. So there's the dilemma that we face. Do I think we'll be fine? Sure. I think it's going to be, it's not going to be easy. It's not going to be easy. It's just like what's going on, we're going to have to work something out. And we're going to try to do everything we can. But if we can't, then we take it as far as it can go and see what happens. Because nobody knows. Keith will tell you, the law director will tell you, he's looked, nothing in the state matches it. There's been no court test or anything else. So we're on hollow ground. But I'm open for suggestions. And maybe I sent you an email. I don't think it went over too well. I'll say publicly that on negotiations, I'll tell you publicly what our plan is, and I don't, our plan is to follow that plan. Our course is to follow that plan. There's no secret there. I don't need administrative, you know, discussions to tell you that. So, but I appreciate your time, and I appreciate your effort. Yes, ma'am?
Ms. Stevens.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, Mayor Williams. I'm really glad you're here. As you know, I was looking forward to your report this year. You mentioned that one of your, you mentioned your vision is to have something like 3CDC. And I have a couple of questions, but a couple of thoughts, too, hearing you say that. One is, we're just a couple of weeks away from this community agreement rolling out. Residents have been working for over a year now to create a plan for the city, and opportunities are moving forward. We just passed this resolution for this adopt a park program, and I'm trying to wrap my head around, and this is my question. How do you envision what you'd like to see in terms of employing this person? I think you said the person's name is Donna, working alongside.
Donna.
No? Okay.
I've dumped the project on Donna.
Okay, I see.
That would be a true statement.
I didn't think you meant this Donna. That's why I was trying to figure out.
I, I.
You mentioned the name. And so my question is, you have a vision of something around development, a private-partnership. We have some of that in play already in our city. Some of it's still bubbling up. And so I'm trying to understand, what is your vision for connecting, or what are your thoughts for connecting what you want to see with what's already happening?
My vision is to try to mirror what 3CDC is doing on a much smaller scale in the same way with Covington. In other words, professionals to look at the development area, professionals to look at the banking, professionals that have contact with the banks, companies that want to put up money to put in a pot. So it takes a lot. Now, this is not to overshadow what you're doing. It can be a joint effort, but there has to be a start to get professional people that look at it from their status and get their input and let it go. Like I said the other day, I said, you know, I was telling somebody the other day, we've got so many people moving into the city, so many new people. I was telling somebody, why we can't get them involved, I don't know. I understand we are, but we need more people to get involved. Just because I've been here 50 years, that don't make me right. Yeah, never mind. But, but people can come in with, look at it with a different set of eyes and say, have you ever tried this? So that's what we need to do, along with that.
Ms. Stevens.
Thank you, Madam President. Mayor Williams, I think what you're saying is happening, and so maybe there hasn't been communication. Are you inviting people to contact you, to be a part of making this happen? Is there a point person at the city that you've asked to do that coordinating?
The new people can connect with you.
Okay. What I'm talking about, it's already happening, has a point in the Woven Oak Initiatives organization that is here. It's already incorporated, and they're overseeing a lot. What I'm trying to understand is, you just said you want something like 3CDC.
Yes.
We do not have Norwood comprehensive development corporation here. And so what I'm trying to understand is, have you picked somebody that you want to do that, who new people can be talking to?
No, I've selected somebody to look at the possibility of bringing professional, getting area developers, people that are involved with economic development that have developed through the city of Cincinnati, to Covington, Kentucky, and through the county. These are professional people who have involved in economic development. Along with that, to get private companies to put in funds.
Yes. I'm familiar with what you're saying. We have some people who do that work, who live right here in Norwood. And so if they, as residents, or my neighbors, want to get involved in that, who do they talk to at this point?
We want to see where we get. We're trying to get it finalized. We want to see where we get, we're trying to get it finalized as quick as we can. Every time when I take a step backwards, somebody changes or something happens and it sets us back. We were close, and we're still close. I got a couple of meetings scheduled that we're going to try to work it out and get it morally fine tuned. But I just want to let you know, the reason I'm doing this is to let people know that we are moving in that direction. I couldn't, I didn't have the ability to talk about it before, and still don't have the ability, you know, to talk about it openly and start naming names. But they're all pros.
Ms. Stevenson?
Thank you, my last question would be, Mayor Williams, should we expect that you'll come back this year and give us an update on that?
If I'm not back here in February, I'm going to be really disappointed.
With an update on that?
Absolutely.
All right.
And Donna's guaranteed me she'll get it done.
That is not a true statement.
But, you know, I expect to be back in February. The goal was January, but then, somebody left to take another position, and you know, so, it set us back a little bit. But it's just something that we need to try. And this is just not for corporations, these are for small businesses, medium businesses. That's the idea, is to take advantage of what we've got. We've done some difference in zoning over the past years to help, now it's time to figure out a way. And if a small business comes in and they qualify, they can borrow, you know, they can get a loan. That's why I want the pros to get ahold of the banks and work with the banks, who they have contacts with the banks, you know, on a first-name basis. That's what you need. And then we'll work with anybody, it's not the idea of changing what you're working on, it's to fortify.
Any other questions? Mr. Bonzel?
Thank you, Madam President. Mr. Mayor, are you aware on February 9th of the Quality of Life Plan, the community agreement rollout that's going to happen from 9:00 to 11:00 at the?
Yeah, I was talking to a woman today at the chamber meeting, very nice, I can't remember her name, but if it had been this Saturday, I might have a problem, but if it's a week from this Saturday, I'd like to be there.
To me.
I want to be there because I want to hear it, I want to, because I'm told that there's a lot of new people involved in it, that's what we need.
And I would, like I said, yes, I would love for you to be there, February 9th, so it's two, not this Saturday, not the next Saturday, but the next one, but it's going to be at Xavier, and I think it would mean a lot to a lot of people if you showed up.
I'd be happy to, because if there's, you know, my wife and I, over the past year, attended things where there was young people just moved here, and I said to them, my God, they're exciting, I mean, they really are, they really want to be here, which is refreshing. You know, when you hear people, this city is not fair, look at the streets are bad, everybody's bad, everybody's a... But there are some people that want to be here. They purposely moved here, and they like it, and they want to be a part of it. And I think whatever we can do to include it, we can. Sometimes they say, well, we're shut out of the political action. Well, you got to get involved. You got to go up and say, I want to be a part of it. But, I'll be honest with you, anymore the way people get beat up, not social, you know, like goofy Facebook can get beat up, that's why people are getting discouraged. But we need to get by that, we need to bring these people in and get them active and get them involved. I mean, they're paying big money for houses, they're paying a heck of a lot more money than I pay for mine. So, they got every reason and every, we got every obligation to make sure that they're heard. God forbid they come up with a good idea.
So, Mayor, I was talking to a Public Works employee today, and he was telling me that he was hired in 1997, and at the same time, the truck that he was driving was purchased, so, a 22-year-old truck. I know that as part of our financial recovery, we will eventually have to come up with a capital improvement plan for those items. Have we started asking department heads to kind of start listing that, if you could give us an update on that?
I don't need somebody to tell me that we need three to four cruisers. I know that we're going to say, if I ask the fire department, what do you need, they're going to say, well, besides the paramedic unit, we need a pumper, you know, we need an engine company, and an APO, at Public Works, we need the backhoe, we need four or five trucks, we need lawn mowers, and we need three more people. And so, that's it. And I'll be honest with you, if you say to them, can you give me a plan of what you want? And they say, why don't you open the other five plans I've sent you? Because they sent us five plans, we come to you or counsel in the past, and they say, you say to me, you've got to be kidding, we can't afford that. And that plan goes right in the drawer. So, they get a little disgusted when they come up with a plan and come up with a request for capital improvements, and there's no money. And that's the whole thing.
Well, I think that's the purpose of the financial recovery plan, if we can do that and build it into it, as you said, you're going to be living by that, and if we, you know, I could probably run off a few things that, I could probably make the same thing you did, but there are probably other things that department heads might know of that we, that we're not aware of. So, I know it's going to be part of the process, Mr. Bonzel, have you started that process yet with any of the departments for capital plan?
Yeah, thank you, Madam President, yeah. So, when we went to get budget numbers, proposed budget numbers from the departments for 2019, which we really couldn't use because we had to follow the plan. However, we did, I did ask them for any capital expenditures that they're going to need in the next few years, and so, I did get a list from some of the department heads on that. So, we have a start of a list, but we'll definitely, if you'd like, I'll send those to you, and if you all want to add things to them, feel free.
And like I said about this building, walk around, go in that auditorium now. When you get out in the center by my office, watch it, because there's still plaster falling from that ceiling. Look at this wall over here, that was all painted, and it's just, plaster's just falling down. Look at the steps, they're filthy dirty. Get out in the basement, it's filthy dirty. I mean, you know, come on, this is a public building, look at it. It's a mess, there's no janitor. I mean, who cleans it? Nobody. And it shows. You can't even take, you know, and I'd say, last year I said, hey, we need a dinner, I'd have been laughed at. Or Joe would have said, we need this. You got to justify, what? Take a look around, come in in the daytime when the sun's out. You know, so, these are just things that we need, not to mention the streets. Everybody says the streets, it'll take millions of dollars in 20 years, and if anybody tells you, I don't understand what they're talking about. It'll take millions of dollars in 20 years. Should you start? Yes. But everybody thinks, well, we're going to start a free front, we'll be done in five years. No, you won't. If they tell you that, they don't know what they're talking about. They'll tell you that because it's an election year. The fact of the matter is, it'll take a long time and a heavy commitment, but we got to get our house in order first. I think I've said that four times.
Mr. Bonzel?
Thank you, Madam President. So, I'll just say that we, this is, now is the time for all of these disgruntled things that you have and that anybody else has, I mean, now is the time to bring those forward. Because in the higher revised code, we have to pass revisions to the financial recovery plan every year. And so, the last one we passed, I think, was right around March 25th, so we'll have to pass another one before then.
I'm telling you now, because, so you'll know, because we will be talking to, we don't talk any further, Joe, when it comes down to finances and purchasing stuff, first thing we do is take, talk to the financial supervisor. And the financial supervisor said, you need to do that roof, look at this place, because it's going to cost you more. Financial supervisor said, one of the things you got to do is you got to change your accounting system now. So, you know, you're looking at several hundred thousand dollars right there. And so, trying to balance it out. And I'm the eternal optimist, I still think we'll get it done, I still think it'll work. I'd sure like to be around to see it. But I would, even more than that, I would like to see, be part of starting it in that direction, to get it solved. I'd like to look down the road in three or four years and find out, the city's on their way back, it's doing fine. But we got to start, we got to start somewhere. And it's tough, it's hard. But I'm, if somebody's got another suggestion besides a tax, let me know, I'll pursue it.
Any other comments, questions?
Thank you very much for your attention.
Thank you, sir. We will move on to other requests to address, council, and we have one Reverend Sonny James. He'll give us your address, and you have five minutes, and I'll remind you of your promise.
Pastor Sonny James, 1830 Hopkins Avenue. With all due respect, one of the things that I want to first start off with, I have made many challenges to council and to residents alike, however, I try to stand by my word. So, I want to first start off by apologizing to Donna Lake, because I have stated that on times, although I get very passionate, and that I get very angry, rightfully so. My job here is not, in this community, not to cause division. My goal is to create more inclusion, and I know that we have a problem with actually putting that phrase in writing, and for a number of reasons. But folks, I just want to say, you know, one of the reasons I'm so passionate and why I fight so hard, when you see documentaries of people being waterhoes down, folks jumping out of buildings to avoid being abused, one of those individuals was my very own mother. And so, when I see injustices and I see things that are right in front of us and good quality people just do nothing about it, yes, it angers me. When my son, who's disabled, walks across a school parking lot, and the school parking lot field of adults watch a disabled boy get kicked, stomped, and beat down to the ground, and fluid poured all over him, and nobody say anything about it, yes, I do get angry. But I want to say today, Dr. Martin Luther King put his life on the line, that folks would have liberties that I share in today. And I was just talking to a 94-year-old woman, Maelto Scott, who was one of those rebel rousers as I grew up, and she said, you remember back in the day when all of those national leaders met in your living room, and they were all crying, and I looked over at the corner and I handed you a piece of tissue? And I said, wow, Maelto, I'd forgotten about that. She says, have you lost your fire? And I said, no, ma'am. So, as I stand as a resident today, I also want to applaud the mayor, simply because some of the wording that I've heard him use today mimics some of the things that I've said. I believe I heard him say things like inclusion. I believe I heard him say things like, don't just hand a job to somebody because we're in a clique. You go to a certain church, you're a part of a certain group. I think he said some of the things I've said, bring in the experts, people that actually know what they're doing. And then spread it abroad to where every person in this fine community will have equal opportunity at sharing in that direction. Some of the groups that spear up here, you can't even go and run a Christmas distribution program, and it doesn't matter how much experience you have. What we've got to do, as the mayor just mentioned, we can't keep repeating the same processes over and over. It's time for change. We do have a lot of residents in this community, but all of these groups sparking up, let's take a look at the groups. The groups should look like our community. And my frustration is, when the groups that pop up are the same groups that have always popped up, but they change names, and you can't get anywhere unless you go through those groups, that's how you cause discriminatory conduct towards people, and people feel left out. I go to these meetings, I do show up sometimes, and when I go, it's very difficult for some of them to even look me in the face, not because I beat them up, not because I stole their lunch money. They look at me weird and strange because they know I am going to stand against status quo. And in closing, one thing I want to share, recently, I don't have a problem if any of you council members in this chambers here comes up with a great idea, we are in fiscal emergency, but my God, you cannot just pop up ideas without going to council members first, making sure that, like the mayor did tonight, he's expressing things he wants to do. Recently, we put out a thing about our fire department. My question tonight, and I think residents that are watching, residents that are here deserve an answer, I'm not against taking a look at some of our financial situations. What I'm against is when some individual or individuals can just pop up and say, hey, this is a great idea, let's look into this, not considering the hardship or the stress it's going to cause for our residents. And my question as I close, how many of you council members knew that there was going to be a question about our fire department before it was made public? And I believe you, each of you individually, owe the fine citizens of our community an answer to that, including our mayor, because you are elected by the people, that means you are accountable to the people. So, you can give signs, you can do what you want to do, but I'm being
Can you wrap up?
...what I need to be, and that is a voice for those who can't speak for themselves, because a lot of times, people are still alienated in our community. Answer the question, council, were you aware that there was a petition or there was an interest in looking at our fire department before it went public? And answer that question tonight publicly. Last council meeting, after the meeting?
Pastor James, wrap up your time.
Things, thank you so much.
I want to be respectful, but you need to wrap it up.
And so do I, I apologize. After the meeting, a council member changed what he said publicly, privately, he had people in the hallway celebrating him. But I need you to speak publicly, be bold.
Thank you, Pastor James.
Did you know?
Thank you, Pastor James.
God bless you, thank you.
Okay, we will move on to unfinished business. I can let you know that on my bi-weekly retirees' update, the administrative committee met last week, we got together a letter for the retirees, and that letter, along with the application, were mailed out to all the current participants in the plan from 2018. And so, as those come back, the administrative committee will be reviewing those applications and confirming the years of eligibility, or the years of employment to make sure that those who send those applications back do indeed meet the eligibility requirements. And so, I just wanted to let you know that those were mailed out, so we are making some progress. Thank you. Questions? Is there any other unfinished business? Mr. Sanker?
Madam President, on that same line, did the new committee that was formed, did, have they met as far as for discussion, as far as for the C-9 committee?
Yeah, the administrative committee, that's, yeah, that's what I said, we met last week.
The entire?
And we developed the letter that was sent out to the retirees and reviewed the application. I also failed to mention that I did get an email today from Barbara Montgomery, who is the supervisor at SNS Healthcare, who will be, she's not the day-to-day person who will be handling claims, but is a supervisor, and she is finally getting her welcome letter together, and that should be mailed out to all of the participants from 2018. That will let them know where to send their claims, and that they will be the company that will be making, that'll be paying people any claims for 2017 and 2018. So, that should be going out before the end of the week as well. I've had, I can't count how many calls, in fact, I made a couple of calls tonight before the council meeting up here, just letting people know, they're very anxious to know what's going on, and so, yeah, the committee did meet, and then, as these letters start to come back, we'll meet regularly to go over them and get those, the information down to the auditor's office as to who qualifies. Any other unfinished business? Mr. Sanker?
Yes, Madam President, just another reminder, walking past Victory Park, there are, and we mentioned it before, the first city area about the bricks that are available for the pathway of freedom up in Victory Park, and those, there are still bricks available for people who did serve, and the forms are available either through the clerk's office or through the American Legion, and you can honor, you know, a family member or yourself, but it would be good to fill that whole path up there in Victory Park with commemorative bricks honoring our service members.
All right.
Thanks.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Sankar. Any other unfinished business? Ms. Stevenson?
Thank you, Madam President. I believe it was at our last regular meeting, I provided an update just to share that the letter to the Norwood Chamber had been sent regarding the welcome bag. And today, at the luncheon of the Norwood Chamber Commerce, we received our first donation coming in. So for those who aren't familiar, one of the action teams of the Quality Life Planning Process, along with our Committee of Council for Economic Development and Community Engagement, put together some ideas on how to create a welcome bag, an experience of helping new residents learn how to get involved. And at the time we sent the letter, there had already been 300 single-family home purchases this year. So a lot of people coming in. I know, I was like, wow. And so I'm excited that businesses who are here are recognizing, hey, this is a way to say, "We're here. You can utilize our services." And I think it's going to be a really fun way for residents to feel welcome. We're connecting this distribution to opportunities like block captains, as well as even offering it to companies as a way to welcome employees. So HR departments can reach out, and all the companies have this information where they can be learning about where they're working or living. So I just wanted to share that back with all of council because it's exciting to see it come together.
Thank you, Ms. Stevenson. I was right behind the person who brought her bag of goodies for you. Thank you. Any other unfinished business? Any new business? Mrs. Hanahan?
Thank you, Madam President. In the past, I have encouraged all the council people to go ride with the police, see what they're doing. They're always willing to take you out. I would also like to suggest, I mean, since we make the decisions and vote on finances, that you visit all the departments. I was recently, I recently went down to Public Works, and this will go back to what was said earlier. I'm looking at a truck. The seat is full of duct tape, and I'm told, oh, it's all filled with plastic bags. So you look at, when you actually go out and see these working conditions, I think as a body that makes these decisions, we really ought to know what we're looking at as a city. And I think it'll make a difference when you start talking to these people. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mrs. Hanahan. Any other new business? Mr. Bonso?
Thank you, Madam President. So there was an exciting announcement today on Montgomery Road at the municipal line between Cincinnati and Norwood. And that was that Wasson Way, that the bike, the multi-use bike trail, bike and pedestrian trail that's going to go from, eventually from Avondale and MLK all the way to Marymont. But the current iteration of it's going to go from Xavier to Alt Park. And in the next three to four years, they'll have it finished. But the exciting part that was announced today is that the full Phase Two of the project, so that's going from behind Withrow High School, across 71, all the way to Montgomery Road, is going to be started and completed this year. And so there's a variety of funding sources that's going to make that happen. But one of the really cool things is that one of the funding sources is a $100,000 donation grant from School Outfitters, and which is going to allow the project to keep moving forward. So I just want to publicly thank School Outfitters for that, for stepping up for that. I know that their employees, it was mentioned at the press conference today, Mr. Braden was there as well, that their employees, 150 of them that are there, are really looking forward to using it, participating in it. And I just want to thank them for stepping up and helping to make it a reality.
I'm glad that you clarified that because on one of the news channels, they said, "And the city of Norwood contributed to it." And I was like, I could just hear folks like, "Are you kidding me? My street isn't getting done, but I'm contributing to the Wasson Way Bike Trail." So thank you for clarifying that it was School Outfitters.
Yeah. Yeah. Well, I'll add, thank you so much, Madam President. I'll just add to that, what you just said there. There was a council member in Cincinnati that joked about, they had thanked the Norwood City Council people that were there and said, "And we're excited to have you on as financial partners." And then it was like awkward, and she was like, "Oh, no, I'm just kidding. We know you don't have any money." Like, it was like, we know you don't have any money. It was kind of a little bit embarrassing, but a little bit like, well, whatever. The city of Cincinnati is a very strong financial partner, but there's federal monies and other money, Ohio grants and stuff that are a part of it as well. And I'm sure they'd love to have us on as partners, but as the mayor said, there's a lot of other things that are going first.
Thank you, Mr. Bonso. Yes, Mr. Clark?
Thank you, Madam President. I've been asked to remind everyone, since it's a new year with the Norwood Star, that we have a community calendar. So we would love for people to submit any events or activities that you have going on so that we can get that on the website as well as in the paper.
And, thank you, Mr. Clark. You may want to contact the public library too, because I think they have one on their website.
Yeah.
Maybe they are aware of some things too.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Stevenson? He's had one turn. You're next.
Thank you. I appreciate that, Madam President. Earlier this evening, our friends from CBI, the Community Building Institute, reminded me that they are conducting, on behalf of the city of Cincinnati and on behalf of Hamilton County, a fair housing survey. This is designed for anyone who is a resident in the city of Cincinnati and/or Hamilton County, which would be Norwood residents as well. It is a 10-minute survey, about 10 minutes. It's anonymous, and it's available online. They are asking for public input so that they can address any issues of discriminatory practices that might prevent certain segments of the population from having access to housing. And so if you'd like to participate, you can go online to their Facebook page. So if you go to facebook.com, the forward slash is CBI, Cincy, C-I-N-C-Y. That's facebook.com/CBI, C-I-N-C-Y. And there are two types of surveys. If you go to their January 11 post, that is for residents. If you are a resident, as in you live in a structure. If you are a professional, a real estate developer, work in finance around housing, if you go to the January 22 post, it will be a different survey for professionals. And again, this is being facilitated at the request of the city and the county and the Community Building Institute out of Xavier. They are actually conducting the survey and doing the analysis, and it's in support of fair housing. So if you're able to get online, whether at home, library, mobile phone, it should take you about 10 minutes, and it is anonymous, and they would be very appreciative of your feedback.
Thank you. I wanted to share with you that I did get a text from Tyler. He was listening. He said that they did receive the 40% check, which is what the city had held back for Norwood Community Television. They did order the new fiber transmitter and receiver to get the channel back on the air, and they are waiting for it to be delivered. So hopefully, these will be back on cable soon. Is there any other new business? Okay. We'll move on to the communications. The first is a letter from Joe Gears regarding water rates.
Dear Madam President and members of council, I have enclosed a copy of the letter from the city of Cincinnati raising the water rates for the city of Norwood, increasing it by 3.75%. With regard to the above, I feel the city of Norwood water rates should be increased by 1.25%, above the rate increase from Cincinnati of 3.75%, which would total a 5% increase on the minimum water rates. The 1.25% revenue generated from that increase will be used to maintain the current water system and purchase new equipment needed, a backhoe and utility truck for the water department. Also, there are new unfunded mandates from the Ohio EPA when it comes to the water testing, lead service line mapping and replacement, a new asset management program. Also, the water fund ended the year of 2018 with a negative balance of $147,708, and the water backhoe has been broken down since mid-December 2018 and needs over $15,000 in repairs. With all of the above being said, per ordinance 20-1992, the Director of Public Service shall levy and assess charges in a sufficient amount to pay the current operating expenses and costs of permanent improvements to the city waterworks or water system on an annual basis. The Director of Public Service shall notify council in written form of every increase in water charges or assessments at least 30 days prior to the implementation of same. Sincerely, Joseph C. Gears, Director, Public Service Agency.
Mr. Sankar?
I recommend the letter be received and filed.
Seconded by Mr. Braden, is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonso?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Sankar?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. At the last meeting, we had a request to, from the mayor to go into executive session for the purpose of discussing employee contract negotiations, and so therefore, that's why it's automatically on the agenda. I just need someone to make a motion to that effect. Mr. Sankar?
Madam President, I recommend we move into executive session for the purpose of discussing current labor negotiations and contracts. Anything else Mr. Moore should be added to that?
Mr. Moore, is that sufficient?
That should be, uh, that should work out of the statute of law. Yeah, it's to clarify that it's to discuss ongoing.
Contract union, contract negotiations.
Yes.
Seconded by Mr. Braden, is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonso?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Ms. Hanahan?
Yes.
Mr. Sankar?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Braden?
Yes, sir.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. So we will come out of regular session and go into executive session for the purpose of discussing current union contract negotiations. So we ask those who are not part of the administration or not part of the negotiating team to exit the council chambers. And when we come back into, out of executive session, we'll come back into regular session for the purpose of adjournment. Okay. I want to declare that we are out of executive session and back in regular session. Mr. Bonso?
Thank you, Madam President. So I'd like to say that in light of the fact that within the Financial Recovery Plan, health insurance premiums did not increase 15% as assumed, I move that instead of charging 15% to employees for health insurance premiums as called for in the Financial Recovery Plan, that we recommend that employees only pay 2% of the cost for the base plan offered by the city and 5.5% of the cost of the buy-up plan for the benefit year 2019.
Is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Clark. Is there any discussion? Motion on the floor is for the year 2019, to clarify, 2019, that for the base plan, city employees would pay 2% of the cost, and for the buy-up plan, 5.5% of the cost for benefit year 2019.
Yes.
That's what's the motion that's on the floor. Any other discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonso?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Ms. Hanahan?
Yes.
Mr. Sankar?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Braden?
Yes, sir.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. We have no absent members. Mr. Bonso?
Thank you, Madam President. I move that we adjourn.
Seconded by Mr. Clark. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonso?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson? Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Ms. Hanahan?
Yes.
Mr. Sankar?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Braden?
Yes, sir.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. This meeting is hereby adjourned.